...on transportation and we want to get our guests that are here who are experts in various parts of transportation have some presentations for us. So we'll get going right then. We also have David Clark from Representative Brittany Pedersen's office. And hey, Mike.
How you doing?
Come on in. You're last, so you're good. And we'll have some time at the end for announcements and things like that. Donuts in the back, so please grab one or two. I've got little knives that can cut them up, but it looks like we have plenty, so everyone take two. With that, what we're going to start with a presentation from RTD. And we have two folks from RTD who are just in the back making last-minute plans together. But we have Susan Wood, who works for RTD, and we have Peggy Kaplan, who is one of the RTD directors for this area, if I'm not mistaken. So we're going to have them come on up. They're going to present for about 10 minutes, have a few minutes for questions and things like that. We'll try and be on time as much as possible, so.
Welcome. All right. Well, thank you, Randy.
Ellen.
Thanks for asking us to come. Again, as Andy said, I'm Susan Wood. I work for RTD. I'm an environmental planner in our systems planning department. And Director Kaplan, who you all, I'm sure know, I'm so glad, is here today because she has perspectives that I don't necessarily. So we're going to tag team this a little bit. It was really funny. I asked our communications department for information in order to be able to provide information to you, all the things that we'd like to share out in the world. And they sent me a, Andy will go, oh my God, they sent me a 118-slide PowerPoint presentation. Well, I don't think that's going to go. You know, I think that's too much. So.
We have the same one.
Do you? I mean, there are volumes of information in there, but more than you would ever want to know. So what I've done is I've sort of cherry picked some things to talk about. And then Director Kaplan is going to jump in and add information to that and add some things that I'm sure I haven't thought of that we need to talk about and go from there. I had a little overview of RTD, though. I don't think I necessarily need to do that because we all know who RTD is. We know, certainly, they count Jefferson County being certainly one of them. And that we have a range of services that range from bus travel to light rail travel to commuter rail to access a ride to paratransit, to more than that. So we have a lot going on at all times. Most recently, three strategic initiatives have been identified. In some ways, they're really very much to the point and what you would expect. One of them is Back to Basics, and that really focuses on state of good repair and asset management, which makes a lot of sense. Then People Power, which really focuses on the workforce and learning and development culture in RTD, as well as employee retention, which we all know across the board, not just for transit or transportation has been, has been an issue, but one that we're, I think, starting to make some inroads on. And then a welcoming transit environment is the third of those, and that really has to do with safety and security and a good ride and a good experience with RTD. One of the other things that we really wanted to cover today and talk about, really maybe add some length as well, is the financial outlook for RTD. I know in recent years, reports in the press have not been good. There's been a lot of money expended over time to build fast tracks. And in spite of the fact that it's not quite done, almost 80% of it is done, but still, there's some that remains. And that expenditure did has had an impact over time, as well as the recession in 2008. However, in the near term, to date, today, our financial outlook is improved and better. Our midterm financial plan, which Peggy, that's 2024 to 2029, I believe, shows a net, a positive net cash flow, which is good. We couldn't necessarily say that a few years ago.
I was going to interject you. We have one of the highest bond ratings, I bet, of any transit agency in the country. It's, we were recently upgraded to double A. So we are, we are really, the bond markets, everybody looks at RTD very favorably. That's, that's temporary, though. And Susan was, I mean, but for now, that's a really good sign.
That is a good sign. And I know it's something we were concerned about many even a few years ago. So it's a very good sign, and that couple of positive cash flow is a really good sign. Our funding and our financial structure is complicated in many ways because we are public entity. We do bond. There are a variety of funding sources. But our primary funding source is sales and use tax, and that's like 70 to 75% of our revenue. Only 5% is fares, and then 20 to 25% is in grant funding. And that's significant and substantial. But by noting that 70 to 75% is sales and use tax, you can see how closely revenue there is tied, is tied to the economy. Let's see here. I did have a soundbite that I think is of note. Again, with one, noting that, noting that having most of our revenue coming from sales and use tax, essentially almost a single string, not totally, is something to be concerned about or to think about. Looking at diversifying where our funding comes from is something that I know is being considered. And I think that started with, and Peggy, you will know more about this than I, that started with looking at how other transit agencies are funded and looking at whether there are any of those, any of those methods that could, that would work for RTD or work for RTD's constituents. So that's something that's been looking, been looked at as well and is being studied currently. It's worth noting that state funding for transit for, I don't know if that's changed in the most recent legislative picture, but prior to that time, for Colorado, it was 1.1%, money coming from the state for transit. That's not, there are states that have a lower percentage than that. That's right. But the top one is Connecticut, which is more than 70%. So you can see where we fall.
We're about 46th out of all the transit agencies in terms of recipient of state funding. So we're way, way down there.
Yeah, most definitely. And that's worthy of note, too. And perhaps that's something that could change in the future. We'll have to see. But I think that's a fact that most people don't, don't know. And in fact, I didn't notice that until I saw that graph myself. So one of the things that's being looked at, too, is Tabor, which plays a large part in RTD's funding and our ability to retain the revenues that, that we earn. Because, as you all know, I'm sure with Tabor, those revenues are capped. And they're tied to the previous revenues from the year before. So in a few years, as I understand it, we have really the ability to be really all, I don't want to use the word crippled, but severely hindered by the fact that we're not able to use those revenues. Our fast tracks revenues, that, this is one of the other things I meant to mention. RTD is funded. The sales and use tax is 1%. 0.6% of that is for the base system, which is pre-fast tracks, and the systems that we run today that continue on our bus service. Then 4/10 of a percent is for fast tracks. The fast tracks funds, some of those are maybe, I think all of those because of the bonding that needs to be repaid, are not subject to Tabor. The base system is subject to Tabor.
Well, they're subject to Tabor after 2050.
Exactly.
So.
Right.
But that's the 4/10 of a cent.
Right. But the 6/10 of a cent, though, which is a larger portion, that's a different story. And in fact, some of those funds, I think, will become not exempt. It's either later this year in 2026.
I think you can go into that in a little bit if you want.
I would love that, Peggy. I would love that. Because that's where I'll get into trouble because I have the details of this and a lot to consider. But it's something worth knowing about because without funding to run the service, there, it's very difficult. Again, we're in a good spot right now with our financial plan. There's not extra money so much to expand service or to add additional service, but to maintain what we have, funding is there. Peggy, do you want to talk about Tabor? This might be.
You know, I can give you a little bit of history. In 1995, voters exempted RTD from the Tabor's limitation. And that was through 2005. But then, in 1999, voters exempted Tabor from those limitations for the debt, for, some of you remember the T-Rex project, which is South I-25, and that was CDOT and, and RTD and the bonds that were issued for that. Those were exempted from Tabor. And as Susan mentioned, those were part of the base system, which is the 6/10 of a cent sales tax. And so there was a Tabor exemption, but that expired either in, gosh, I can't remember, it was like 20, 20 years from now, or when the debt service was paid off. And that is being paid off this year. So we will be subject to the restrictions of Tabor. Even though we had been exempted, we will be subject to the restrictions of Tabor going forward after this year. And that's, some of the models that we've used to forecast what that could mean, it's about 50% of $600 million of RTD's revenues. So that could be next year. We could be subject to that. And bear in mind that we've had this exemption from Tabor. And since that's going to expire, if, if voters, if we were to go to the ballot in this year, it would not really change anything with respect to what the voters are currently seeing. It would mean that there could be a somewhat of a Tabor refund for voters if it were to, I guess, lapse. But it would be kind of the status quo in terms of maintaining what, what we currently have. But it really could impact greatly RTD's ability to provide the service it does have right now. And then the ratchet effect, as you know, Tabor then looks back a year and says, okay, what were the revenues from the previous year? So we would, we've had this trajectory of revenues that's been pretty steady. But if we were to be subject to the Tabor limitations, it would go down, and then it would take us several years to catch back up to where we had been. It's, Tabor is very complicated, as our legislators have known. And it's, it's just something that we're really studying. We're, we're right now in the education phase, trying to get constituents and people to understand what that means for service for RTD. But even, Susan mentioned that right now, we're trying to maintain what we have. Fast tracks suffered a big blow, and most of that are rail corridors, you know, the fast, and a lot of noise has been made about the Northwest Rail. There are other fast tracks components in the fast tracks plan. Among them were enhanced bus service, and that includes suburb to suburb. You guys know that in this area, there's very little service. And part of it is because of population densities, but there's very little service. As far as fast tracks goes, there were no corridor, rail corridors in this area that were planned. But we wanted to maintain what we had by way of bus service. That hasn't happened. In fact, it's been diminished. And you all up here, you have the CD and the EV, three trips in the morning, three trips in the evening, that's it. And that, that has eroded considerably since fast tracks was passed in 2000. And we just want to make sure that that doesn't get further eroded to serve people up in the mountain communities. I kind of got off track there. But anyway, that's good. So we've got some of the, some of the ways that we could mitigate Tabor, but we believe that the best option is really to ask the voters to continue what we have now by way of the Tabor exemption. I can only say that now. If there's a ballot initiative that drops, then staff and, and RTD directors cannot campaign. We have, so we're just right now in the education phase. I would be, I'm going to stay, I know Susan has to leave a little bit earlier, but I'm happy to stay and answer any questions and what we have. I would be remiss, though, one of the things that the state legislature did do last two years was funded Zero Fair for Better Air, which is during the high ozone periods of July and August. And they funded that the previous two years. They essentially backfilled what we would have lost in fare revenue. They were unable to do that this year, but they funded our Zero Fair for Youth program, which is, is a huge boost to especially Jackson County Schools. What that has done has really improved the train seat rate for students attending public schools because now they have access, free access to public transportation to go to school. So that, I just want to just say thank you to our legislators for continuing that program because it's.
It's really showing.
I think, yeah. We're so grateful for that, funding for the Zero Fair for Youth. And we hope to just maintain that.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like that you brought that up. You know, I know I've been asked about the Zero Fair for Better Air, and unfortunately, that wasn't able to be continued. But the fact that the youth pilot, it was a pilot program to begin with, the fact that that segment will be, will have more of an impact now and over time. So that's really a good thing. The only other couple of things that I have on my list, and then we'll wrap up, is, is a couple of projects that are going on that are worth knowing about, and you may have heard about them. The Downtown Railroad Replacement Project. It's going to be underway this summer. It's just now starting. There are five intersections that will be, five areas that will be affected. And the downtown loop for light rail, that really goes from like a convention center over to 30th and Downing, that will be, that will definitely be impacted. And light rail trains will be going to Union Station instead of to the core of downtown for the duration of that. So that's just worth noting about. It's a necessary project. It falls into the state of good repair category. So it's a good thing to be doing. But it should wind up in September. There's also a project that affects some of our rail, light rail service and that's replacement of coping panels in some of our stations have had delays and shutdowns. And it's worth checking schedules because of that. But that program, too, should wrap up in September, and that won't be a factor anymore. On the Downtown Railroad Replacement Program, there are subsequent phases to come, 2025, and perhaps beyond, hopefully not. But they won't be beginning until the beginning of 2025. So after this one ends in September, then, then there won't be the shutdowns. And the disturbances in downtown from that should be over with. And let's see, the only other thing I wanted to talk about was service change, which doesn't affect you a lot for the reasons that Peggy just noted. The EV and the CD are three buses in the morning and three buses in, in the afternoon. That was, we just had a service change, and that did not change with that. We have another service change that's coming out in September. Those are scheduled to remain the same. The one thing is that the W line has been, the frequency is less now because of the work going on in downtown. But with the September service change, that should go to 15-minute frequencies. And I assume that that is in the peak hours. But that's worth looking into and knowing about as well. And that's a positive thing. It's always nice when you can increase frequencies. Sometimes that's just not, not the case. And those were really the only items I had to share. But I, actually, Peggy, I'm here for a little bit, and if there's any questions.
Well, I just wanted to say that Susan alluded to the fact that, you know, check the schedules. We have a lot of updates to our, our mobile apps and our information and really trying to improve access to scheduling, including in some cases, real-time scheduling, where just like on Uber or Lyft, you can track where, where a car is coming. In this case, there are certain routes where soon you'll be able to see where your bus is, is coming or not. So that's, I mean, I know it, it takes some proactive action for you all to access it, but we're really hoping to improve information and accessibility for all of you. And I just want to thank all of you who do ride RTD. We really appreciate your patronage, I guess.
Definitely.
Great.
And thank you.
Yeah. Well, thank you both. We appreciate it. One thing I want to add myself, I ride the W line quite a bit getting downtown, coming to testify at the Capitol in front of our legislators or going to, I wish we were still going to Nuggets games, but I go into a Nuggets game, and lots of, lots of reasons. And one thing that I, I have heard from RTD is that the security would be increased. And I have to tell you, the last time I wrote it, absolutely, a much larger comforting security presence there. And definitely the folks I was traveling, we all, we mentioned that and talked about that. So with that, we're going to move on to, CDOT has a presentation for us. We have Kurt and Jeff. And Cody is not here for our, Cody is not, Cody is not here. So we won't hear from Cody, but we will hear from Kurt and Jeff with CDOT. And I'll let them explain exactly what their roles are, but we'll have about 15 minutes here. So.
Thank you.
Hey, Andy, is there a way to turn the lights down so we can see the presentation?
Yes.
Bottom one.
Well, we've got a chance to ask a question.
Yes. Yeah.
I think it is most important for us to be exact.
Yeah, let's, let's have them go. And then, because I think, well, Peggy's going to stay here.
All right. Thank you for having us back to talk to you all about the CDOT projects, specifically the Floyd Hill project for me. I'm Kurt Kiyaka. I'm the CDOT Floyd Hill Project Director. And with me is Jeff Hampton. Are you here?
So I'm a resident engineer in West Program. We're based in Golden, and we service Jefferson County and Gilpin County, or Creek County. So Kurt's going to talk a little bit about Floyd Hill, and I want to talk about all the other stuff we're doing.
Thanks, Jeff. So lots of exciting movement on Floyd Hill. We've been under construction of the main project for just about a year. We started right after the Fourth of July of last year and got a lot of significant progress in the last year. But I'm going to start with a new rendering that I have here of the project, just to give you a quick idea of what the project is for those of you that haven't got one of my presentations yet. But I'm going to orient yourself here. We're looking down Floyd Hill. So in, in this rendering that I'm going to play, that will run through the project, you have your back towards Denver. And this is as you go down the hill, the quarry's off to the right. Two Bears Restaurant is just over the hill. And then as you go around the corner, you get to Central City Parkway, Hidden Valley, and the Veterans Memorial Tunnels. So some aspects of the project here, you have the Third Lane, which is an express lane that the project's delivering from the top of Floyd Hill, connecting all the way down into the Mountain Express Lane. You're also see coming up the hill here, there's an extended on-ramp that will allow trucks to get up to speed before it drops at the top of Floyd Hill with this new connection that doesn't exist today, from US 6 to eastbound I-70 at the bottom of the hill. One of the safety improvements the project is doing is flattening out these curves. So we have this big sweeping curve on our viaduct for westbound I-70. As we make it down around the corner here, one of the other elements the project's delivering is this new frontage road connection that doesn't exist today from US 6 at the bottom of the hill. You can see it under the viaduct here, connecting into County Road 314 at Hidden Valley, Central City Parkway. So as I-70 exists today, it's tight, south 45 mile an hour corner at the bottom of the hill here. It's flattened out with better what we call sight distance. That's if you go around a corner, something's in the road, you have time to react to it and time to safely stop. I-70 today snakes through the canyon where you can see our future frontage road. And so then this is part of flattening out the curves as we go through the canyon. And then it's making way along here around the corner. We're still traveling westbound. Make it around, this is the Hidden Valley-Central City Parkway interchange. You can see Central City Parkway headed up the hill there. And then as we make our way past Central City Parkway, again, I-70's pushed a little bit more into the mountainside here. That opens up opportunities for riparian restoration, which you can see right up here, also flattening out those curves for safety and upping the design speed with 55 miles an hour through here. And then we make it here to the Veterans Memorial Tunnels, where just west of the Veterans Memorial Tunnels is where the project And so moving on, what have we done in the last year? We've done a lot of work in our east section of the project. That's the first project that we started. So that's everything from the top of Floyd Hill down to the US 6 interchange. If you've been tracking the project last summer, we did have traffic holes on I-70 that allowed for rock scaling, rock, knocking rocks down the hillside. And then also, we had six rock blasts that removed some of the, the rock for the project to allow us to get into the mountainside there. We've installed over 3,000 linear feet of drainage pipe. That's over nine football fields of drainage pipe. We've also done 50,000 square feet of sculpted shotcrete walls, which you can see here. They actually blend in very well to the environment up there. And it's actually hard to even recognize it as you drive through that is concrete and not actual rock. Well, we have also relocated some of the existing tolling infrastructure for the Mountain Express Lane, which will allow us to work on our west section, which we started here in March. Our west section is everything from Hidden Valley to I-O Springs. And so that's underway. We're starting work there. We're starting construction of a temporary bridge that will allow us to do the work. Now I'm going to talk about upcoming traffic impacts. So we're going to have two full closures of I-70, overnight full closures here. The first one is June 5, and that's 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So overnight closure. And the next one will be westbound I-70, and that's June 10. Same thing, 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM. The detour for both is pretty straightforward. It will be an eastbound, you get off at County Road 65, travel along the frontage road, and then get back on at Homestead. And then for the night of the 10th, will be the reverse. And we will have traffic control out there, including off-duty officers to help guide traffic through to limit the impacts overnight. Future traffic impacts. So you won't see a lot of stuff during the day over the summer until after Labor Day. And then that's when our west section will really start up, and we'll have those rock scaling and rock blasts again. Scaling is a little bit more impactful. That's those 20-minute traffic holes where we knock all of the rock down the mountainside. We hold traffic for 20 minutes on I-70 during the off-peak hours, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We allow traffic completely cleared. We see delays up to 45 minutes before the next scaling activity happens for up to six times a day. So we're expecting those in the fall after Labor Day. And then after those, which could be up to two months, then it will be rock blasting. That's a little bit less impactful. That's usually one, maybe two blasts a day during those off-peak hours for several months after that. So now I want to talk about some of the progress on our early projects, then I'll turn it over to Jeff to talk about other West Program projects. So the Genesee Wildlife Underpass, if you drive through there, that project is nearly complete. I think they have a little bit more work to do this next week, some paving activities. And then they will be complete this month. The Ramiddog Projects at County Road 65 and Homestead is moving along very well. We're expecting those to be complete here by July. So two projects getting complete this much, this month, which is great. And then also, in within about the next month, we'll start our Pegasus parking lot at our ranch. So that's a parking lot with EV charging and a future shuttle stop for Pegasus. If you're familiar with Pegasus, that's the smaller shuttle that can drive in the Mountain Express Lane that goes up and down I-70 corridor. So great things on that. And then we're closely coordinating with projects that Jeff's going to talk about here, including the Peaks to Plains Trail that has impacts. here, including the Peak to Plains Trail that has impacts in the US 6 Canyon, as well as some of the other upcoming projects. So I'll turn that over to you Jeff and you can talk about the other West Program projects.
Thanks Kurt. So the last couple of things mentioned under there, Kurt mentioned the Jeffco US 6 Peak to Plains Trail. We've got the Mount Vernon Canyon Emergency Escape Ramp, that project, the actual construction of the ramp is nearing completion, fingers crossed, maybe Monday, Tuesday. And then we've got some ITS, the Electrical Elements and cameras and things that will be happening in the background throughout the course of the summer. So that project's close to wrapping up the impact that you guys see every day. And then I'll, both up here on the bottom are renaming projects that we've got going on, one further up the hill in Clear Creek County closer to the Eisenhower Johnson Memorial Tunnels. That project will be wrapping up later this summer, they've got a lot of guardrails still to replace and then a little bit of paving to do in the westbound lanes. And then the third bullet there, the resurfacing on I-70 from Cheethos to Morrison, that project's going to be kicking off in July. So as much fun as it is for us that everything in the I-70, everything in the I-70 corridor, we all say it's Kurt's fault from Floyd Hill, it's really not. We're, we're doing a lot of other projects on the outside of his limits and trying to keep everything as up to date as we can on I-70. So you guys live in Evergreen, not everybody drives I-70, right? There's some nice backroads to go the other way and get to 285, down 74, some of those ways. I frequent them a lot, I love to come up here and fish, but, oh, did we not get?
No, skip, just skip past that one.
Okay, there we go. Just gonna say, I thought we added another slide here. So what else do we have going on in the county? What are some of the other things that CDOT's doing, places that you may or may not frequent? Things that we have in construction right now, so I'll start on the right side, this is active construction. If you've been down further into the city, I-70 and Ward, we've got a big bridge project going on there. We're going to demo the third phase next weekend. Okay, so if you drive I-70 in Ward, good idea to find a different road next weekend. Bringing down that third phase of the bridge, they're making great progress out there, should finish that project by the end of this year. US 6 in Wadsworth, so if you head east on US 6 and you get out towards Wadsworth, you can see all the new noise walls going up. That's an early phase project for the entire interchange, which I'll talk about on the other side here in just a minute. So they're in active construction right now, getting those noise walls built, making some improvements to the frontage road and a little bit of the drainage out there. And that's just a precursor to the rest of that interchange time we get to them. Completion of that project, we're looking at early 2025 for that one. So they're, they're kind of right on schedule right now, so it looks like it might begin in the next year. We'll see if they make up a little bit of time as we get into summer. And then C-470 in Quincy, down a little bit closer to where I'm at, we've got the Roundabout Project going on there, improving the flow of traffic and the safety at that Quincy interchange at 470. So kind of a, that's kind of an awkward interchange if you've been down through there. If you're eastbound on 470, you're getting off in one place and if you're westbound, you're kind of coming on in a different direction. So looking at some traffic improvements there, that project should be starting any time now. We were expected to start into May, early June, so it looks like we're tracking early June. And that one will go clear through next year. So Roundabouts, as you guys are all aware, if you're up here on County Road 65, they're not easy to construct. So what do we have in design right now? Like I brought up, the US 6 and Wadsworth Full Interchange, we did get a Raze grant for that project, so that's going to help our funding challenges out there. Looking to complete the design late next year, okay, so takes a while to get through everything there. We, you know, I actually built the first two phases of that project several years ago. Yes, sir.
What does Raze stand for?
I knew somebody was going to ask that, I don't know the acronym off the top of my head, I will look it up for you though.
Is it a federal state?
It's a federal grant, yes. So I, we have so many of them, I can't keep track of what they all are because there's tons of programs out there right now that we, the state has a, a full staff to help us chase these grants, so.
Is that part of the infrastructure package that passed, they've signed into law?
I believe Raze is, yes. So completion of the design late next year and then looking to start construction on that one in early 2026. Okay, so pretty big impacts in that area. It's, I've worked on Wadsworth and US 6 for several years in my career, a lot of traffic through there, a lot of interesting challenges, but definitely going to be a cool project to see that structure get replaced. Near and dear to you guys, right around the corner here, we've got State Highway 74 going to get resurfaced. So from just a, I think it's just a little bit above Evergreen Lake all the way to Kittredge. This is one that Cody's going to be managing, so I, again, I apologize he couldn't be here today, he's, he and his wife welcomed their first child on Thursday, so super excited for him, he's got a baby girl now. We get to go fish on Monday and he goes, I think this might be the last time I get out. But nah, we'll take her, it's gonna be good. So we'll be coming up here early spring 2025 is what we're looking at right now, that design is tracking along, we expect to advertise it in the fall. And then that gives contractors time to kind of schedule when they're going to be up here. Again, fun project, you know, we, we've been looking at it already and kind of how we're going to face things in construction and when do we do daytime work, when do we do nighttime work, where does it all fit in? That downtown section of Evergreen, oof, boy, I'm glad he's the RE and not me, I'll, I'll play on I-70.
That's going to be a fight there.
It's going to be a challenge, but that's what we do. And that's one of the reasons why I don't think it's been paved since 1988, I think is the year I, I heard thrown out there, so, yes, sir.
What do you actually got to change with 74 between Kittredge and Evergreen? Is it going to be widened at all?
I, I don't know all the details, I don't think they're widening a lot just because of the right-of-way challenges and where everything is in there. So I know they're looking, I think they're looking at some of the places where they can. I know they're looking at some of the pedestrian improvements and whether or not we need to get some of the ADA ramps and things in there, but I'm not super familiar with that project. So, yes, ma'am.
You could ask though maybe, but on that same vein, there's a lot of cycling traffic.
Yes.
And it'd be nice to have a little more shoulder space, like just a little.
Let me, I know this gentleman had a question for RTD. So why don't we go, while Susan's still here, what was your question?
Ridership on night rail is down considerably, especially in the evening due to crime and drugs. Is there some way they're looking at improving that, especially since Colorado's now the number three on crime, highest crime in the United States? So how is our legislature and RTD trying to address this increase in crime and what do you think is causal?
You know, I'm glad you asked that because there's been a real conservative effort from RTD to increase its officer presence on bus and light rail because we, services have shown that people don't necessarily feel safe. We actually used to have seven full-time police officers and we are ramping up to have over 120 projected by the end of the year. And so there's a real effort toward, because when there's an officer presence there, that's a deterrent to crime. So that's where we stepped up. One of the challenges that we face is that jurisdictionally, some, for example Denver, they, our officers can only police in certain areas and on RTD facilities, but then they have to call in Denver to, to support the enforcement efforts. And in certain jurisdictions, I mean, Jackson County actually, one there where we have a really good working relationship, but sometimes there's a tension that exists among law enforcement agencies about who has jurisdiction and who can enforce that particular, or deter that particular behavior. But we, we really have increased our officer presence and they're not just security officers, they are fully fledged police officers, so they have authority to arrest and to send them over to prosecution.
Has RTD done any studies on why there's such an increase in crime, especially in Denver?
I, I don't know that RTD necessarily has done studies on that, but I, I, I think the real issues began with, during the pandemic when ridership was down because people were not commuting for one and not using transit. And that's really where the downturn in ridership began and they're really opening up that opportunity unfortunately for having those who are unhoused on, on the trains and, and the crime on the trains. And it has definitely become an issue. And I'm really so glad to see that steps are being taken to take care of that. I know as a person, we all have friends who are out there who ride RTD, they come to me and say, I'm scared to ride, I don't want to ride. And this is going to make a huge difference. The other thing, and Peggy, correct me if I get this wrong, as I might, is I understand that there will be some transit police, there will be transit police assigned to some specific areas that are truly crime-prone areas and ones that are really targeted in order to make sure there's a presence. Yeah, or something.
So we asked that in areas where there's.
Yeah.
And the entrance are moved. So I think you will see.
Yes.
Is that a good department-wide area?
Yes.
Great to get off the bus, which mine is gifted by product.
Oh, I know, I, I. So yeah, but feel free to come and ask questions afterwards.
Thank you, that was a good answer, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to have Mike Venetta from our, the County Transportation and Engineering Department, he's our director, go next. And, but I believe everyone's sticking around and of course legislators and commissioner will also be giving updates, so, and we will definitely leave some time at the end for questions and answers all the way around.
I have a question for CDOT. Is there any future creative sometime of pathway for the elk to cross Highway 74 from Elk Meadow?
Can I also address that because I've got some numbers that we can speak about?
Yeah, sometime, there was.
Yeah, let's have Mike go and Mike, Mike, Mike have some insight into some of that
as well and then we'll definitely address these questions.
Thanks.
I'll put a sign up for it.
He's going to build the bridge.
The Elk Bridge, I like that.
Jefferson County, Director of Transportation Engineering. And I know a lot of you, I've talked about the project guide out the door here, that we're trying to accomplish. It's gone through many phases of really ambitious and it's been whittled down now. And we had, we looked a bid for a project that starts up here, we're widening, trying to put in sidewalk along the river down to downtown, basically to the dam. And, and that project had, from the beginnings, had met a lot of obstacles in terms of, is it feasible? You know, I knew from the beginning, because I came in and started here about the project, okay, what are we going to do? Is it really feasible? We have a mountain and creek, with a lot of restrictions due to, we can't touch the wall, it's a, it's hard to walk along the sides, we couldn't go into the mountain at all. But then we're looking at a river next to that, we can't go in the river too much. And so what are we going to make possible, can we bring over it or whatever we can? So the first time we went out bid, we didn't get any bidders, wasn't, weren't able to bid for it. Went out again, we whittled the project down to half the size and then we got one bid, it was still not legit bid for a, it's a federal grant project. So that one came in almost twice the cost that we were looking at, counting and trying to dedicate for this project. So I'm trying, one last ditch effort to do, it's, it's, it is a much more whittled down thing, but it still provides some of the elements that we're trying to accomplish. It's going to be a rural walkway, basically a widened shoulder along the road. It's not going to be up to here, it goes up to Little Cup Creek to that assist to sell place there. We have that lot to do pop there, we're going to try to make recycle parking on that side right now, right next to them, formalize that a little better. And that way people can still park there and make it cleaner, it's really a mess right now. And then try to continue with the pave, we overall, we paved, road and bridge paved out here down to that spot and we got extra four, four foot of shoulder over there. It's the best we can accomplish in that area without going crazy with a lot of money if you spend just on that project versus other areas in the county. So from that point, going down to the dam, we're actually through almost an intersection, we're going to try to accomplish another widen paving area there. One of the key elements is the Little Cup Creek Bridge is going to fail eventually. It's a, it's a level three critical structure and which means it's, some, some time can happen soon, you never know when. It's rock structure under there, that's very hard to predict, we can do the rock structure. So we're trying to rebuild, replace that structure of Little Cup Creek and in doing so, trying to get some more widening there into Little Cup Creek and accomplish a wider pathway there. And then in front, across the street from the firehouse, there'll be some more striped and formal parking also for the public to park there. So we've kind of accomplished the parking aspect of it, I think pretty reasonable. And then we're trying to do a mid-block crossing, basically it's a rapid, a rectangle rapid flashing beacon. So they hit the button and the light flashes there by the firehouse, but we're trying to, there's some uniform traffic control measures, you can't have a firehouse with the traffic flashing beacon that close. So I'm trying to look at some ways around that to make it work so the public can cross there and then they'll be on the west side of the road to the Grimes Park or the parking there and then continue on down. And at the same time, we'll pave from 74 all the way up to, well, the road bridge stopped last year. So that's kind of where the project is going right now, we have it in design phase, trying to make it constructible. So the contractors have bid on it, I mean, the bottom line is extremely hard project and we're trying to utilize the federal funds that were allocated towards it. So far, the FHWA and CDOT have said that they'll support it at this stage, but I have to get the final approval and the plans pending stuff. So that may happen. If we go forward, we hope to go out the bid January 25 and that way they can, they can work in the water, you know, as you all know, this floods up here a lot. And so they got to find the best time for finding, dry time is August, or September might be a little bit of a time. But they may be able to start some elements along from Cactus Jacks around the corner and get a lot of that part done. It just depends on the year, it's a hard prediction. That's why uncertainty to contractors is either a boondoggle or it's a scare thing, you know? A contractor that doesn't know exactly what to expect on water, it's going to be very difficult. As a most you all saw this last year, the traffic, just putting in a simple control design caused terrific amount of traffic back up. So I think it's going to be the next best thing, we know we have to replace the structure, so I think that's what I'm trying to really push for, at least we get something out of this thing, the structure gets replaced, we do have a little better walkway, we do have more parking and hopefully a little better access up to here. And we'll have to work on some other measures as we go forward, but I'm, I'm hoping that people even bid on that. So that's, that's the, in and in that show, I don't know if it's going to be approved, but we'll try to see if it works. It's been a long, long thrown out project.
Yes, ma'am.
What, you, you mentioned a recycling parking.
It's a recycled asphalt, it's a.
Oh, recycled asphalt, I thought there was.
No, I'm sorry.
That's what I thought.
I'm used to asphalt terms, I know, with so many acronyms going on, we've got to talk about proceed on, the Raze grant or, you know, I forgot what this grant is, IHAJA or something like that. It's just a bunch of acronyms. So don't, don't feel you shouldn't ask this question, ask them because I probably don't want to either. And, but it's, we do want to formalize the asphalt parking there we can in the future if we want to, we might look a little more, but right now we're trying to keep it as, appealing as possible to a contractor. We talked to contractors and what, and a lot of them just, it's just uncertainty, I'm going to tell you, I've seen, I've talked to any contractor, they think it's worse, he's not knowing. And so we actually now talk to them and say, what do you think? And try to see what we can get out of it. And I think we're getting close to, we're trying to get a precast structure that they come out and pop me in. We may be doing a hybrid of that, I've been trying to, I was a bridge engineer before my other life and I did a lot of E47 bridges and stuff, so I've tried to brainstorm some unique ways to get this thing done fast. We're getting close, we're brainstorming consulting next week. But speed is important to contractors of course, to, and to the public, because it will be disruptive just doing that part along the sanitary line going through this structure right now and it's actually exposed, kind of weird. So it gets hit with logs and stuff, we're not changing that, we're going to keep that in because that's a, a private issue for Metro District, but you have still casings around it. But that's moving that along with all the Comcast, Six Ducks, things like that, they're moving their lines and, but the good news right now, what Excel has done supposedly, they're done out there, I hope they're not out there still. But I saw some wires hanging up in the air and stuff. So then moving the poles back. But I saw some wires hanging up in the air and stuff. So then moving the poles back and redoing that part. So that should be out of the way when the contractor comes in. The only thing I have to deal with now is sanitary and the duck work for the Comcast or Miller maybe or something. So that's that project. I'm hoping to survive it. I mean. I've been with the guys for 29 years. I've been with the guys for 29 years. Most projects you see out here, I've had my hands dappled in. I know the area for a while and I know how the guys go through in frustration with the simplest things out here, honestly. It's just the backup is horrendous. Twenty, you know, 15 to 25,000 vehicles a day depending on the time it is, just like that. It's a lot of cars, you know, and the slightest things, schools. We have school over there, middle school over here, two school, high school, elementary, the busing schedule. I've met with the bus people. They really were helpful. But even that alone, we have parents, we have kids in elementary and so they couldn't pick your kids up. I mean, it was very, very complicated at first stage going through that, trying to figure it out. And so I'm hoping that this will be less disruptive and it can be worked out. So it's not bothering people too much on that one. Speaking of schools, up at Hatch Drive in Buffalo Park, we have a revitalizing, revitalizing Main Street grant. And I think that's one of the 74 years in the early oners on the one who's doing that. We're working on putting, at the elementary school, we're putting some accessibility for sidewalks, everything. The intersection there is going to be rebuilt, having a pork chop out there. It's an island. And then a rapid fire beacon for kids across the street there. It's a flashing beacon. And sidewalk down all the way to the high school parking lot. So it'll be a formal parking. A lot of times the school, elementary school evacuates and that they have a horrible place evacuate that's safe, that's dry surface. So they'll be using a sidewalk to evacuate the kids through down the street. But our goal is to get some pathway all the way down to here. We've got a Evergreen Buffalo Improvement District. You all have volunteered once in, sex tax. They're going to help out with that. That's one of the projects we have done their thing. So we're doing this project. We're trying to marry their funds with grants so they don't lose that money. They can use it somewhere else. So that's a $250,000 grant. And so road and bridge and their contractor, Silva, well, should have started that. I wasn't looking to look at it. They should have started that coming up here. And so you see some activity going on, going down towards the high school. And then we got a, we kind of, we may use that one lane road, kind of look at some ideas over there to make it work so that everybody can walk up that direction. Our hardest part is the top of the hill, that tight area there. Haven't got that one figured out yet. But we're working our way and we'll be doing some other safe school, safe drop the school grants by the high school to get the, I think it's Olive Road, try to get a pathway up that direction too to the rec center. So we're, we're trying to utilize our money as much as we can from the Evergreen Buffalo Improvement District money to help so they don't, they don't lose their funds and they can keep the money up. So go as many grants as you can, but every grant takes a lot of time. It's, it's a lot of staff and time and hours. So we try to, we try to make that a worthwhile project when we do it. So that, that one's already started. I hope to have that by all means finished before school starts.
And Mike, why don't you do one more and then we'll have the legislators do their.
That'd be great.
Updates. So we still need a little time at the end for questions and answers.
I'll look with the Jefferson County, JC73, Camel Heights, the Brook Forest will be resurfaced in 2025. And then Meadow Drive will be resurfaced also in Douglas Park Road. So I guess I'm curious about Douglas Park, but I just had it bring down here. I'm like, how would you do that? But those are resurfacing on metals for sure. We've got to look out at either the project with that also. So our staff has designed a safety feature for that project before they build and over they obviously it becomes steep backwards. And then a couple culverts up there by Lewis Ridge and Afterman Lane starting this summer. There'll be two big culverts being replaced up there. There'll be some road closures or detours in that area. I'll let you go on that.
Great. Thank you. So let's have our legislators do some updates. Mike skip the county commissioners update. So they have their questions and answers.
Hi, everybody. Brian Toney, I represent House District 27. Not here. It's still the north, all the mountains north of I-70, Jefferson County, Golden, and then Northern Arvada. And this is my third term in office in legislature. And I've got lots of really good bills that were passed this year. Some of them you may have seen in the news. Some of them have been signed recently. The latest one that was signed was the Community Revitalization Grant Program. It's actually a tax credit this year, but it's the third tranche of funding that we're trying to put in to get money out to communities that have some need for more housing and some arts. And we're trying to combine those two together. It's been a really successful program. It's been used all over the state to take those buildings that need some love and need some attention. They usually end up being theaters or dance studios and different things like that that have a small housing component to it for the artist to come in. And these are really good cultural centers that end up being a really valuable part of the community. There's lots of examples of these all across the state. One of the grant recipients was the Miami Italian Playhouse in Golden. They got some money to, to get their project moving and it's been really successful. Everyone loves going to see shows there. They have some good ones that are now. The one before that was the right to repair. So this is my third right to repair bill. So if you own an electronic device and you're frustrated because you can't fix it and you want to fix it and you have to go through the manufacturer and they charge you a lot of money and it's, it's, sometimes you just can't fix it. The right to repair is supposed to be able to make more options available to you. It's going to make the manufacturers make the products more fixable. Apple has been notorious for saying that, you know, the parts that go into the phone have to be paired by them in order for you to put it in. So it limits everything that you do to the iPhone to Apple and only Apple. Where a lot of other repair shops that you have locally can't do it unless they're authorized repair people. So this is going to help save people money. It's going to keep your phones in circulation longer. That's going to help save the environment because we're going to have less e-waste. There's a lot of really good reasons for right to repair. We're one of five states that do the electronics part. We also do ag equipment and wheelchairs. And those two things are only here in Colorado. No other state has done that yet. Yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty big deal because Colorado is the best place for right to repair in the entire world. And that's something to be proud of. Also, we had two, two of my funeral mortuary regulation bills were signed recently. You probably saw that in the news as well. You've heard all the bad news about the really bad things that have been happening in some of the mortuaries around the state. Just atrocious things, taking advantage of people at their most vulnerable time and not fulfilling the wishes of those people who have passed away. And it was because they were not regulating it. So the two bills that we put into place that I was on, there was another third bill that was more about the body parts bro, it's weird stuff. It's weird stuff. But there's going to be inspections. The state will be able to inspect, not because a complaint was filed, because that's how it was before. You had to file a complaint in order for them to inspect. But if you don't know anything is wrong, how are you going to know that you need to even complain? And that's why the inspections haven't really been happening. Because if you get ashes that you think are ashes, but it's cement, do you know the difference? Can you tell? And that's what, that was what was happening. And if you don't know that something doesn't look right, you're not going to complain. You're just going to think that everything that they did was correct. So now they're going to have regular inspections by the state to make sure that the facilities are, are being done right, that the refrigeration of bodies when they have to be stored is correct and that people are using the proper equipment. None of this was really happening and because we didn't have any regulation. Also, the licensing of the professionals will be happening. And we're putting together a group of people to do that for state, for having a state going group with a lot of the victims' families to make sure that we are getting the right kind of regulations in place. But it's hard when you have no regulation at all and now you're going to regulate an entire industry and you have people been doing it a long time. You have to be really careful as to not force people out of their business because they have to have an onerous process to getting the license even though they've been doing it. And then allowing the new people to come up through a more standardized process. So we're really balancing that out to try to make sure that we keep the people doing good work in especially in small communities when you don't have a lot of options for, for these kinds of services. And we want to make sure that we're weaning out the bad people who are not doing the right things because we don't want to be in the news again for these kinds of atrocities. Because this has been international news about what's happening here. So these two bills will really help to put a crack down on that. Another really important bill I did is the regulation of artificial intelligence. We're the only state to do that. We even beat out the EU where they just did something a little bit after us. But it's, AI is being used in a lot of different settings and you probably don't even know it. And I don't think many of you are applying for jobs, so at least we don't have to worry about that one. But if you're applying for a job and you submit a resume, AI is reading your resume and giving recommendations to the hiring people to screen out things just to get people, the best people to those hiring managers. You could be getting your, your resume kicked out because the AI algorithm is set up in a certain way that favors certain people over certain other people. And this is happening. So people who are not getting jobs because AI is doing this. It was found that an AI algorithm was favoring people named Jared who played lacrosse. And they were favored more over anybody else. I don't know why that happened in the algorithm, but, but these algorithms are not perfect. And they're good, but they're not perfect and they are causing discrimination for a lot of different people. So what the bill does is it has transparency in the AI. So if you have, if you feel that you've been discriminated against, you can see what the algorithm, how the algorithm works and how, how that, and then the Attorney General has the ability to be able to get you some relief and, and do some investigating to find out if in fact you were, that they can force that company to reevaluate the decision that was made. So it's not just employment, it's insurance, it's legal things, it's housing and a bunch of different things that we call critically important decision making that are high risk. So it's not everything, you know, your chat GPT and all that other stuff. A lot of that stuff is not translating, different things like that are not covered in this. It's only for the things that are really focused on the high risk things that impact you. And AI is a really great tool. And we need to work with the tech companies to be sure that they have the ability to make more of these tools and better effective tools. But at the same time, we have to make sure that our citizens are not being negatively impacted by, by these processes. Because if we don't, they're just going to keep abusing people and going to get away with it. So those are a few of the high level things. If you want to get on my newsletter, you can go to my website, brianlucio.com. I do a beer and a coffee every month. So you can come and just hang out at the coffee shop or at the brewery. And it's a nice informal setting. We can chat. I also do another town hall in Arvada. It's the third Saturday at 10:30. So if you want to join for any of that stuff or if you want to send me an email, just do that. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I'm always here to support you whether you're my constituent or not. It doesn't matter. I'm the person who answers. I'm happy to help. So thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Tammy Story and I represent House District 25. And my house district is south of I-70 in the Jeffco foothills. And then I have a small portion of unincorporated, what? Unincorporated Littleton in around the Chatfield High School arctic area. So anyway, we, we did have a very, very busy session. And I'll just cover some of the bigger highlights and think that we, things that we passed during the session as well. And before I get started, so I don't forget, I do want to thank CDOT and RTD and also Jeffco, Roden Bridge for being here and providing all that great information. That was amazing. And also, so relative to some of the stuff we did in, during session, we worked on improving maternal health for some at-risk populations. We passed a bill on wage theft to benefit our workers. However, the governor vetoed that one. We also passed some more legislation on preserving and improving the EITC, the Earned Income Tax Credit and the Family Affordability Bill as well to give our families more benefit and more support, financial support. We did eliminate the budget stabilization factor for education, the education fund. And that has been in place since 2010-ish, I want to say. And so we were using essentially funding for education to balance the state's budget. Because we have so little, you've heard a bit of conversation today about Tabor. It is very impactful. I wish we were done with it. But as you heard from our speakers that were talking earlier about having restrictions on funding and being under Tabor caps, penalty, not penalties, but under Tabor caps so that they can't necessarily utilize all the funding that they have. The state is in that place. Jefferson County is in that place. And it's highly detrimental to our budget. So last year and the upcoming tax year, the state will be returning or reallocating revenue that we collect by law that we can't keep because it's over the Tabor cap. It's billions of dollars for the state, billions. And if we had that additional money, we could invest more in CDOT. We could invest more in RTD. We could invest more in public education. So the money would be utilized and it would be utilized to the benefit of the citizens who are paying taxes. We're not allowed to keep that money. And so those Tabor checks that you get, whatever amount they are, a hundred dollars, fifty dollars, two dollars from the county, forty dollars from the county, like what do you do with those dollars that changes your life? And it's so important for you to have that. It's revenue that you have paid through your income tax and through sales tax. And if we had, if the state had that money and Jefferson County had that money and could utilize it, we could improve services and we could do more. We could get more roads paved, you know? And it's great, all the work that's being done, but it wasn't too long ago. I know we had like a $10 billion infrastructure needs list with CDOT. I don't know where that number is right now, but $10 billion. And that's just basic maintenance stuff. So just want you to keep that in mind. Those tax dollars that you pay when you buy merchandise and so forth, they're your income tax. You know, obviously we do get a lot of things done, but we could do so much more if we didn't have Tabor in place. And we're the only state in the country that has a Tabor, the only one that restricts our revenue in this way. So additionally, we did pass some legislation to improve air quality and protect water. And there also was legislation passed to, to prevent evictions, home evictions without cause. There are, there are great landlords and property owners who rent their space, who do it the right way and address the issues that are a concern between the renter and the landlord. But there definitely are landlords out there that will throw people out without cause. They just tell them they're done and they have to leave. It's not because they didn't pay. It's not because they messed up or damaged the property. They just decided based on factors that are not legal, that they don't want those people living in their homes anymore. Or so we passed some legislation to make that better for renters. And then there was legalization of the ADU. And then there was legalization of the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units, which I think was mentioned also, to allow people who have space like in their backyard or whatever to have a mother-in-law suite or, you know, have family, other family members live there or student renters or whatever. Because we do have a housing crisis and this does present an opportunity for some people to be able to do something like that. I also worked on a number of bills myself. And one of them is focused on, it really has to do with family court and parental responsibilities when it comes to domestic violence and child abuse. And those factors all come together and sometimes court decisions don't go the way they should. Sometimes caregiving is allocated to the abusive parent instead of the protective parent because of the way some of our laws are and because of the way the system and the process works. So this bill was to help adjust that, to make sure that judges are receiving all the facts and all the information upon which they are basing decisions and not just some of it that is completely biased, that sometimes leads to detrimental effects to the children who end up being placed with the abusive parent and the abuse continues and in some cases kids die. And so trying to fix that with this bill and hopefully it does. It hasn't been signed yet, but hoping it gets signed soon. And also continued to work on natural gas issues. And it was a really good, strong bill, but the industry out there is also very, very powerful. So we got it through the House, but it died in the Senate. And so we'll try again to work on ensuring that there is better protection and more safety measures in place to ensure public safety when you have natural gas. So that was a good one also, so we'll just bring it back. And I also worked on a coexistence bill that was really important to, as many of you know, gray wolves were reintroduced into the state last December. And that's all well and good, but we need our state and our systems to sort of adjust to the reintroduction of gray wolves because it's a, there's going to be kind of a long transition period as these wolves have been reintroduced here. They're, they're not established in their regular packs. They're very familial and they live in a group and they operate just like any other family would operate. They have sort of head of household, they have the comic, they have the game player, they have the ones that are more serious and kind of keep everybody in line. And so when they all come to the state, they're fractured because they're not coming from a whole pack, they're scattered and pulled from various packs. And so it makes their process for hunting and finding food and feeding and stuff a little bit disrupted. And so they are, there have been some instances where they have killed cattle and calves or at least it's been determined that they have. And so a bill that I worked on was to help teach ag owners coexistence tools that they can use to try and keep the apex predators away from their livestock so that it's good for everybody. So anyway, lots more to talk about. Legislators could talk forever about the work that we do. I appreciate you all being here and thanks so much for your time this morning. And feel free to reach out to me as well. You can find my contact information on the General Assembly website and yeah. Thanks.
So David from Congresswoman Patterson's office is coming up. I want to let you know that the county has, our open space has these really handy-dandy Slash calendars with our kind of newish spoke and hub model. Anyways, there's a whole bunch back there next to the donuts, which I haven't seen enough people eating. But get that and there's all sorts of information. Also, maybe take one for a neighbor that isn't doing all you think that they might do, but show the, how good the program is set up, all the things that are accepted and stuff. Also, you can take a picture of both sides and send it to folks. Did it.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for having me. My name is David and with Representative Brittany Patterson's office. And just to talk a little bit about some of the work we've done at the federal and local level. We're very excited to have recently put forth during the appropriations process 15 projects, community project funds, which are ways for our office to be able to directly request funding for important projects throughout the district. Last year, we were able to get, I think slightly under $13 million to the district for areas around affordable housing, water quality, public safety, all sorts of things. And so this year, most relevant to you, we were excited to put forth a proposal from Jefferson County around fuel, hazardous fuel mitigation in Evergreen to help with wildfire evacuation routes. So we'll be, it will have to, Congress will have to pass the budget for the money to go out and we'll go through the appropriations process, but we will be very much looking at that and tracking that as it goes through. And then we're also excited, I know a lot of, the presenters talked a little bit about federal funding and grants. We, our office had introduced, and it just passed out of the House, a bill that was, recognizes special districts. So a lot of wildfire protection districts, water districts, sewer districts, all sorts of parks and recreation districts, recognizing them at the federal level for the work they do as a unit of government and specifically wanting to make sure that they went to have access to the same federal funding that's been going out with the bipartisan infrastructure law, the Inflation Reduction Act, wanting to make sure that these districts have that same access to it. You would think that they are already recognized at the federal level, but that currently isn't the case. So it was kind of a common sense bill to put forward to make sure that these important partners within our district are able to get that. And the final thing I'll just say, if you ever have any issues with the federal agency and IRS refund being held up, social security benefits, anything like that, feel free to call our office, we'd be able to help.
Great.
Thank you.
I promise there'd be time at the end, sorry. But here's what we're going to do. I know there are some folks here who want to make a brief announcement. That's great. If you still have a question for one of our speakers, what we're going to do, go ahead and raise your hand and ask your question. And then I'm going to ask one of our speakers to raise their hand and maybe you can chat with them one-on-one on the way. I do know that they have another thing coming in. So who did we have that wanted to make other comments?
Hi, I'm Christina Green. I started in a public called Wildlware in 2019 and we work on wildlife vehicle collision issues. So this is really for CDOT. I grabbed down some numbers because we're CDOT numbers. We had in 2023, we had 38 animals that were killed on Highway 74. 15 of those were deer and 17 were elk. In 2022, we had 58 animals killed. There were 29 elk, 21 deer that's just down Highway 74. Most of those are from the lake, I-70. So it's a significant number. In Region 1 for CDOT, Highway 74 is 1.94% of all of the highway miles, but we have 22% of elk in Region 1 killed right here on Highway 74. Each, in 2023, we spent over half a million dollars on wildlife vehicle collision based on CDOT cost benefit analysis numbers. We would like to see something done here. Wildlware has worked with CDOT. We have worked with Jefferson County, Christina, everybody who has really done a great job. But we have a problem and we need to address it. We do appreciate the variable message sign, which is right here by Safeway. And it's not started yet and so we'd like to see it come on. And there's another one planned up by Elknet, or we'd like to see that put in. And June is the number one worst month for wildlife vehicle collision in Evergreen area. So please be very careful. I don't know if you've seen our feisty elk at the lake, she's been all over the news. But there's a lot going on with the elk right now, they're having their pets, the deer are having their fun. So we have a lot going on and we'd like to see this addressed through CDOT because CDOT is responsible for 74. So, okay.
How do you get, how do you get involved in your organization?
Wildlware Network.
Very good. Thank you. Very good.
Did you want to talk about the glass recycle?
Well, Andy, I have, I'm sorry. Commissioner. Yes, I would really ask, I was just having to exit. But my name is Deb Sandler, I'm involved with recycling in the community. Any of you have seen me, I'm the bag lady, I go around and dress me out of plastic film. Anyway, I also, have you seen me? I'm sure of it, I knew he was going to give me a moment. Next, next B.A. Glass is a huge contaminant to your single stream of recycling collections. It needs to be recycled separately from all of your other recyclables. And we are in collaboration with Glass to Glass, a glass processing plant and Anheuser-Busch and O-I. We are, we are providing a 20-yard bin just, where am I right now? Just out there, just a little bit south where there's a liquor store and a spa. Just to the south of that, there's a big piece of property that the fire department, the EFR, is providing for us a location to drop this 20-yard bin. And there will be free glass collection. Look for an announcement in the paper or just when you're driving by, look for a big bin. And separate your glass, book club ladies with your wine bottles, everybody that, I'm in a book club, it's a, a book club is a euphemism for wine club. But anyway, all of your, separate your glass, you're going to find a big bin, free drop offs and God, thank you, Commissioner.
So that's the name of the liquor store, so I know where it is.
Or you can buy your liquor and then drink it. Whatever, what is the liquor store?
Oh, was Anderson?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Waste Management says that you can You can't. Recycle glass. You can't. So they got a mistake on their website. You know what? Or they throw it away. Well, yes. The recyclables curbside are mostly going to the landfill. Everybody knows that. Yeah, I mean.
I just looked it up, that was.
Yeah.
I just wanted to give a shout out to Brittany for her work on the online safety dating app. Thank you.
Online, right?
Online safety dating.
I'm here with Rotary Wildfire Ready, I want to let you all know that we now have wildfire spotting cameras on our mountains to spot fire early. And also Conifer Rotary is spearheading a service day on June 8th and June 29th to thin the trees on the side of the road of 73 between Conifer and Evergreen, which is our most dangerous evacuation route because so many people have to leave that way. And we can use volunteers to help check in volunteers who are not inclined to be one of the people actually hauling slash. But we definitely need lots of people.
Kids, grandkids, anything.
June 8th and 29th, and I've got a sign up in the back. I want to look at it and get details or talk to you. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Okay, questions? Yes, sir.
Is it possible that the state may do away with ESG regulations on the adventure using to qualify people for loans?
I don't know what that is. What is ESG?
You haven't heard of ESG? Environmental, social governance, the banks are using to qualify people. So some banks won't loan you money if, let's say you're in the gasoline business because they think that's an environmental issue. So they're doing this to, it's a whole movement. Some states have that one. I was just wondering, if you don't know anything about it, I guess you might have heard of it.
I'm not aware of it either, but that doesn't mean somebody isn't on it. Like we all kind of operate in different spheres and banking is not one of mine.
And what's the main point of our increase in crime?
So, you know, I think it depends on what, what specifically you're talking about. There's, there's been crimes that have to do with vehicles, there's crimes that have to do with property loss and theft, there's crime on the streets and whatever. Like I, I think the, the state is continuing to work on those things. We've done a number of different bills, policies in the past relative to body cameras, you know, so that there's more data, video to look at to determine what has happened. What particular crime is
Well, we're now number three in the United States.
So one, one thing I'd like to address with the, with the crime rate, so the county commissioners also sit as the law enforcement authority for the county and, which means the sheriff has to come in four times a year and give us a report on crime trends and things that law enforcement is doing within Jefferson County. The last two reports that the sheriff has done with the county commissioners is that the overall trend, again, not every single crime, there are some that are up, some that are down, the overall trends of crime within Jefferson County has been declining for over a year now. And we're, we're to, overall, the crime trends are close to where they were pre-pandemic. Of course, the pandemic really threw a lot of things up. Also, the jail now has fewer people in the jail than even pre-pandemic. Of course, during the pandemic, the jail population went down quite a bit. But the jail population is down and overall trends in Jefferson County are lower. I've seen some of these other statistics just telling you what the sheriff has reported to us as the law enforcement authority. Okay, let's get some
One more than one thing is this in particular with car theft, we had two different laws that we did for that. One was to increase the penalty for car theft, especially for lower value vehicles, which impact people more than anything. And then we put money towards a grant program for law enforcement to crack down on the car theft. And that was a huge spike that we had and has been really declining that has had a lot of effects.
I think one of the problems was it was still a misdemeanor if you only stole up to $1,000.
Yeah, you changed that.
And you changed that.
Great, so right now, other questions? Yes?
I just want to make a statement. I'm Lynn Bacallo, I run a doctor highway thing on Highway 74 between mile marker two and four. We just finished up a cleanup. I don't know if you, when you drive down 74 and you see all those orange bags there, that's us cleaning up the highway. So you are still very welcome. And we had 28 bags this last time along that route there, so.
A lot of that was small pieces. A lot of liquor bottles.
Only we had a bin right over here to put that.
No, so anyways, if you, if you would like to come and the next time we, so we just did one, so we wait probably until September, October and
Four times a year.
Yeah, we do it four times a year. So we, when, nice weather. And so if you would like to put your name on this list and give you a call when we get that organized again and certainly would appreciate your help.
Great, thanks. Gotcha.
I'm Bob and I'm with the Mountain Foothills Brewery Club. If you want to help, next Saturday morning, 10 to 12, the Kiwanis in our club clean between the barn on Highway 74 and Safeway. And so between 10 and 12, we meet at Wendy's next Saturday morning and a lot of little liquor bottles.
That's amazing.
Yeah, and where our route is
Two to four.
Between mile marker two and four, which I'm, you know.
So you're like mile six to
You're mile six.
Or five to Well, folks, thanks. I'm going to, I'm going to cut us off here. I know many of us will be around if there are individual questions and things like that. Please take a donut, somebody you know.